Oh, we have Janice. And Tom. All right, so we have a quorum, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'm going, we're, we are actually everyone calling the special town meeting to order slightly late due to technical difficulties. So I'm going to call the special town meeting to order at 7:01 and ask John to do a roll call.
Good evening, President Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Duckett.
Here.
Mr. Hanchett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. County Administrator Kyle Snyder.
Here.
Police Chief David Burse.
Here.
Public Works Superintendent Darnell Bond. Finance Director HR William Morgan. Town Clerk John Hodson here.
Okay, let's move to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God with liberty and. Is there consent to this agenda? Commissioner Lot has just joined us, so that we have all the commissions.
Yes, I consent to the agenda.
Okay, I'm hearing no. Hearing consent to the agenda and no concerns otherwise, let's move on to business item number one, Resolution 2022-04, a resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners authorizing the mayor to execute a national settlement agreement with Jansen and the distributors in opioid litigation. Can we have a quick overview?
Yes, so just to bring the commissioners up to speed, this is pretty much the closeout of a multi-year like a special project the town's been working on several years ago, the town partnered with a couple other municipalities within Prince George's County and around the state and around the nation in the opioid epidemic to file a joint class lawsuit against some opioid manufacturing companies. It's been kind of slow going through the courts over the past three, couple of years, not a whole lot of updates. Up until Friday, suddenly the Attorney General released guidance to the municipalities on how to, the settlement's going to be reached. So pretty much the mayor already signed the documents, they were due by close of business today. However, to sign them, the, the town attorney recommended passing a ratification resolution to allow the mayor to sign on behalf of the board. So pretty much this resolution allowing the mayor ratifying her signature that was signed earlier today. The town will be receiving just over $11,000 to help respond to the opioid epidemic. And pretty much that can be programmed at a later date for any sort of programs or pamphlets or costs or something like that. But this is just closing out. The lawsuit.
So are there any comments from the commissioners at this time?
So my question is, what's the catch? You know, this is something that somebody filed a couple of years ago on the incident with that attack, and now we have money coming to us?
That's correct, pretty much it's a settlement agreement.
Okay, how come there's the town that was nearby when I was looking at the dollar amounts? There was a town nearby that was getting like a ridiculous amount compared to us. Is it based on population?
Yeah, population is how they did the calculations.
Figured.
Yeah, that's always gonna handicap us.
Okay, there's no other. It's just free money, basically?
A part of it, well, not exactly free, it's, it's a funding.
What do we have to do for it?
You need to use it to respond to the opioid epidemic. So some sort of like pamphlets or programs, that's, that's something the town can program at a later date and figure out.
So we have to use the money for education for whatever.
It's a pretty wide range, so pretty much we're filing bits to get the money and file it on time to get the money. And then we, and part of it comes to us directly, and the other half, we have to submit a plan to the state of what we're using the funds for. And obviously, they want to see, make sure it goes to responding to the opioid epidemic.
Okay, is this, is this a big issue in town?
It's a big issue everywhere. I mean, especially at the courthouse, it draws, and they have their drug court day, we, we see some stuff. But it hits us just as much as the other municipalities.
No, of course, I'm just. I was curious why, based on what we'd have to do with the money outcome, with the fact that we, the only situation we have is having a courthouse in town. Do we have a high population of opioid addicts in this town?
We don't have data on that, because they didn't base it off that, they just based it off population.
Okay, no, I'm just curious. That was all I had.
Do the other commissioners have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay, so at this time, we will move to taking public comment. John, do you have hands raised? And a timer ready?
I do not see anyone with a hand raised.
Okay, seeing no public comment, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-04, a resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners authorizing the mayor to execute a national settlement agreement with Jansen and the distributors in the opioid litigation?
Yes.
I second. Oh, sorry, Janice.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so Janice, you moved, you so moved, or?
Yes, I so moved.
Okay, so, and then Tommy, you seconded. Okay, so now we'll vote in alphabetical order, and she can get us, John. Commissioner Duckett, you can start us off.
Lay down.
Hi. Mr. Hanchett.
Hi.
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 Resolution 22-04 passes, sorry, I'm stepping on your. I'm going to move, we adjourn this meeting and open the town work session.
Word.
Okay. Let me. All right. So I'm gonna call this Board of Town Commissioners work session to order at 7:10. John, can we do a roll call?
Yes, President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Duckett.
Here.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Present.
County Administrator Kyle Snyder.
Present.
Police Chief David Burse.
Here.
Public Works Superintendent Darnell Bond. Finance Director HR William Morgan.
Present.
Town Clerk John Hodson here.
Okay, we will do the pledge of allegiance again, because that's on the agenda. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will head on to business. I just would like to ask Ms. Monica Williams of Marlboro Town if she is ready to be the first item on the agenda, or if she would like us to her to later, based on a request from earlier. Can we allow her to respond? All right, so we'll move right into the Marlboro Town. And give, we'll give you the floor, Monica, to address that.
So basically, we had a conversation, it really centered around some homeowner concerns about what the, I guess, getting some clarification on what the town can do and what they cannot do on the side streets of the town of, of our subdivision. So we had some discussions, and we just wanna kind of just reiterate what we, what our desires are for what the, the town of Marlboro Police Department can do, or what kind of actions that they can take. So we're still, I'm still having conversations with the rest of the board about it, so we don't have our, our preferred top five list of major, of major concerns, so we are still working on that. Because we also wanted to get a little bit of homeowner input, input. So I'm sorry, I don't have that, I don't that, we were, that we, that was requested. But that's pretty much just the, just the, the, the basic explanation for what this is about. So yeah, so we just want to make sure that the town of Upper Marlboro Police, and also other authorities in the town are able to do what they need to do without there being confusion about what's allowed and what is not allowed.
Chief, do you want to add anything? I know this is ongoing conversations with how to make this work technically.
No, not until, you know, they get their input from their residents as to what it is they want to see as their top four or five things, and we will be able to better address their needs based on our conversations prior to today.
Commissioners, do you have any questions about this?
Not at this time.
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Monica. We will keep having this conversation and working out the details with you.
Thank you so much for your time, as usual.
Thanks for being here. All right, we're gonna move on to item two, which is ordinance 2022-01, which is the mid-year budget adjustment. So I think Will will be addressing it.
Good evening, everyone, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good, so, um, so what I'm going to present to you tonight is the FY 2022 mid-year adjustment. As previously mentioned, this is something that we do periodically throughout the fiscal, well, not throughout the fiscal year, but we have done in the past. Last year, we didn't do a mid-year adjustment. Normally, we, we try to do, of course, the initial approved budget, which happens in the months of May end or June. And then we usually do a year-end adjustment to try to get some of those expenditures and our revenues in align with how those actual numbers have come in throughout that fiscal year. This budget adjustment right now was not, didn't have a lot of dramatic adjustments. However, we did adjust the line items such as public utility taxes, we did reduce that roughly about $100,000. We did reduce the, so I apologize, speaking on the revenue side, so public utility taxes, we did reduce that about $100,000 as well as our parking meters and earned income taxes. The reasoning for, to reduce the earned income taxes was solely because we did receive, the town of Marlboro did receive a lump sum on June 30th of the previous fiscal year, so one day before this fiscal year. And what the earned income tax department does, they do reconciliations in the months of December and April. In April, when they did a reconciliation, they, they thought that they underpaid us, and then, which is why we got a huge lump sum of like $220,000. And then they came back and said, I think, they think that they overpaid us. So earned income taxes hasn't come in as anticipated right now. However, we, I hope that it will see some increases within the latter stages of this fiscal year. Some other changes, we made sure, of course, with the new Board, Board of Commissioners, we made sure we included the salaries for those individuals. We did adjust some numbers within the media relations point, due to the vendor for media relations. Last year, in a previous fiscal year, he, he was not, or they were not, I guess, good with their timing on submitting their invoices. So in July, August of this fiscal year, we did get an additional amount of invoices for about four or five months. That was for the prior fiscal year that we had to pay. So that actual number is increased, which is why we wanted to increase that number here based off of what we previously approved within a budget. Um, some things with the bank charges, of course, as you may all know, we have a new parking meter vendor. So some of the charges were increased as far as their, the handling of what they do for the town as far as administering and sending out mailings. You might see some salaries that's been decreased, the reason that the, not sorry, you might see the totals of the salaries that has been decreased. Reason being, we budget at the top of the year, we budget for the full allotment or 26 pays for an employee to be hired. As you may know, we, we have, we did not hire certain employees in July of this, or July of this fiscal year. But we did hire some employees roughly within the last two to three months, so we did reduce those salary allotments per, within those departments to, I guess, more so decrease the expenses, but also allow it to balance out what we have within the revenue side of things. If you see the, if you're reading the ordinance, the ordinance is a little bit different as well from what was approved back in June of this fiscal year, or sorry, June of, I would say, of 2021. What I wanted to do was, or what we wanted to do was make sure that we separate the general fund, operating funds, separate those funds from the grant funds, the capital improvement funds, the ARPO funds, things like that. So those are things that are monies that are different from the operating budget, so wanted that, they're somewhat more restricted. I wanted to have those separated so that we can have a little bit more of a clearer picture of what funds that we're, we're working with and what are projected for different programs, projects, initiatives within the town of Marlboro. So as you'll see maybe on your screen, if you are, well, I'm assuming this is on your screen as well. Initially, the FY 2022 adopted budget was 2.1 million, and right now, we're adjusting the budget to, to read as $1,606,637. And that's a balanced budget on the revenue and expense side as well. So I'm open for any questions, comments, or concerns that you may have. Yes, and that's it.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions or comments in alphabetical order?
I'm will.
Not at this time.
Oh. Done, again. I'm sorry, the utilities.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't fully hear the question, I heard about utilities and that's it.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking, you readdressed that, that overpayment part that you mentioned, I think it was.
Oh, earned income taxes.
In turn, yeah, look, no, the, I think it was utility, the overpayment that you mentioned.
Yeah, so, oh, so if, if you're talking about today, it was the earned income taxes which we received an overpayment for.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, so back in, in June, literally June 30th, we got a large deposit from the state for about $230,000, I believe. And initially, we thought it was for the American Rescue Plan. Then we did more research, and we found out it was earned income taxes. We did reach out to the department, that particular department. They mentioned that when they did their reconciliation, well, sorry, let me back up, we reached out to the EIT department back in roughly about October, I want to say. Because September was a very light month for earned income taxes, roughly about $2,000, and I think October was the same, like $6,000. And in past years, those were pretty significant months to, where we might see about $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 for earned income taxes. So we reached out to them to find out why it was so low. And they stated that after they completed their reconciliation, that they overpaid the town of Upper Marlboro within that lump sum payment. I think that's, a lot of that might be contributed to people going back to work, the COVID-19 pandemic, of course, their reconciliations. So that's what they stated to us, which is why the, those payments in the month of September, October were pretty small. I think in November, we received about $70,000, $75,000, which is, which is pretty good, but normally, again, we, we try to net out at the end of the year roughly around $300,000, $250,000 to $300,000. Right now, it seems as if we might not reach that by the end of the year, and it could be because the lump sum payment that came in at the end of the last fiscal year.
Okay, thank you for covering that again.
No problem.
Janice, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, I just had a few things, I didn't want to cut you off. The, I just, the elections line item, I think we need to bring that back up again, just because we brought it up to reflect the past election, but I think we need to bring it up because we have an election running.
So, can I? And I know you have more questions, so when you say bring it up, so right now, initially, we budgeted $1,200 for the town elections. Thus far, with the elections that were done, well, when, this was completed, we had $2,056.30, and I increased it to 2,100. But you're, are you saying that we might have to increase it more when we do the year-end adjustment? Okay.
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying. So we don't need to increase it now, we'll increase it with the year-end adjustment based on what's spent on the elections.
Yes, sorry.
Got it, that answers some of the other questions too, so we're good. Other commissioners?
No comment.
Okay. So if public has comment, and I should have said this at the beginning, but if public has comment while we're discussing, if you can raise your hand. And then John will give you the floor for a few minutes, but we'll give you a minute to raise your hand now, because I'm just saying that. All right, I don't.
Has her hand raised?
And do you have a timer to go up?
Yeah, let me get my time, let me get my stopwatch going, hold on one second.
I just want to know how all of the, the percentages that are over 100% are being addressed.
Okay, do you have any other questions or comments? Okay. Um. If we can move the floor back to Will, so that we can discuss that.
Sure, um, so I'm, uh, I'm not sure exactly if you're talking about a particular one, but what we, what I looked at is, if there were any type of percentages that were, of course, over 100%, we most certainly adjusted, made adjustments to them. On a revenue side, I'm just looking at a few that I can pinpoint on a revenue side. Business license, we had initially budgeted $10,000, we have, at this point, we have over $20,000 that has come in. I did readjust, readjust the budget to $28,000. And I'm sorry, I'm just going down the line, just to speak of, of a few that I can kind of pinpoint. Pension benefits were initially, the budget was $60,000, right now, we have an actual number of $64,000. And that's more so because we don't necessarily know what Merlin State Retirement is going to bill the town of Upper Marlboro, such as the percentage for the employer contribution, until they actually send the bill. So it was at 108%, and we, I increased at this, we increased at the $70,000. So we did increase, if you look at the budget on the far right, we most certainly increased all of the line items to, or a good amount of the line items to balance out, or to, so it can be a little bit more balanced and won't be over its budget. What I will say is, if there is an area that is not, has not been balanced out, is because what we, we try to do is, before the year-end adjustment, and obviously before the audit, we'll go back at those particular expenses and make sure that they are within the correct line item. Not that they are not, but sometimes you can find that a particular invoice, it, it could be for two different things, like an invoice might say, or might, in comparison, it might say, it might look, seem as if we got a certain repair done, but it could have been that we actually purchased something for a supply. So when I say by going back and reconciling each and every, well, not each and every, but majority of the invoices or expenses, when it looks like the line item account is over its budget, we'll go look at that, and again, we'll try to readjust for the year-end budget and/or make sure that we position those expenses within a correct expense account.
Where?
Hold on, because the public comment is three minutes, and it's not a conversation. So I think what Will is saying is, you know, it's not aiming for perfection right now, it's aiming for getting us closer so that the year-end adjustment isn't as off, so. John, do you have any other hands raised?
I do not.
Okay, let's move on to item number three, ordinance, a resolution 2022-03, awarding road engineering firm contract.
I can just give a quick update, Mayor, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So we got proposals from the three firms we've reviewed. The two we were most interested were over budget, so we approached them about their construction cost estimates. And of course, Mead and Hunt came over at about, just under $2 million for construction costs. And CB3 came back with around $400,000 construction cost, and they're both citing the huge rise in construction materials is having a huge effect on their quotes. So CB3 right now is showing the lowest quote to build, and they'd come under budget for at least School Lane and Wilson Lane, the primary roadway that's flooding houses. We have the stormwater issues that we want to repair first with the half million dollars we have available right now. Or we, so that's pretty much where we're at right now with construction costs. So I guess it would come up to the board if when to find additional money aside, or select a firm to do all the designs, and start looking at some other funding options for the roads as well, and speak with the state delegation for some other funding opportunities. That's the latest update I have for you guys.
Thanks, Kyle. Commissioners, comments in alphabetical order, so Commissioner Duckett will start us off.
No comment just yet.
Um, okay, I will. I will say, I think, again, as I I've said a couple of times, that we want to make sure we do this right. Yeah, and we can, let's try to look for some other sources of funding to make sure it's done correctly. Um. That's my comment.
Um, what is the difference, two hundred thousand versus two million?
Yeah, so, um, so it's the total for CB three for school Wilson Lane. Is three, five, two, zero, seven, six, so three hundred fifty-two thousand and seventy-six dollars. Um, they are excluding some items that was just for basic road construction, so they're not taking into account the storm drains. And a lot of pedestrian infrastructure that Mead and Hunt had estimated for, um, because of the site with us. So I think that's a huge factor in the difference of price, um. So regardless, both construction quotes are bringing us past the five hundred thousand dollar mark for the grant. Um, but the engineering is under budget, so we could do the whole engineering. With some additional costs left over to see what roadways we can improve.
Okay, so what the estimate costs?
Like, or?
Just getting the estimate done, is that already been done?
Oh, yeah, yeah, these, that's the estimates for the constructions, the number of the three hundred fifty-two thousand number.
Okay, all right, that's what I have written down, um. I'm just curious what everyone else thinks and. That, I have no questions at the time.
Well, um, this is Karen, um. I'm still looking at the proposals that Kyle presented to, um, that Kyle presented, and I'm actually, um, did speak with Kyle about. Possibly, um, just having someone else, um, do an overview. Another company do it, or consultant do an overview, so, um, so that we can make sure that we are getting the best, um. Um, the best out of the money that we're going to spend, so that's what I'm doing at this present time, is working.
Kyle, I know this sounds kind of, my, my question is, is because. Um, the three that we have, is it possible? I mean, that we can push this back out to see if there are additional responses to it? Or is it, is it, we're too far into it for that right now, because. You know, I'm just asking, just considering, only because I ran into, I was thinking, you know. It it may be a possibility that, I don't know how far this went out, I don't know where we solicited this through. Um, and that's probably something I should, you know, should know, and if you can share that, but, you know, I'm just kind of wondering, like. Um, why did we just, you know, we only, it seems like we only received three. So I'm wondering, like, what is it that we could have done, made to, um, solicit more inquiries or, you know, submissions for this? Uh, opportunity.
First, I can cover, uh, so the RFP got published for thirty days statewide on M M L, the Maryland Municipal League site. So that was our statewide reach in addition to, uh, our social media and our town website. Um, so we did get three firms back, um. They are qualified firms, embedded firms, um, if we'd gotten three firms that were not qualified, I would say definitely put it back. Um, but we do have firms that met the basic qualifications, the RFP. We do have a thing in there saying that we can just kind of drop the RFP whenever we want, there's no, just because they submitted a proposal, we don't owe them anything. Um, if we did just drop it, I don't know how upset the existing firms would be, or if they would resubmit type of deal. Um, but they do have, we did check the qualification with like Mead and Hunt and CB three. Both done municipal experience, and it could just be the fact that we're looking for a kind of niche market on munis. Companies that have worked with a municipality to improve roads and road engineering. Um, and then these are two that operate within the county a lot as well. So I don't know how many firms are out there that specialize in this, um, in with, but.
Are we at the free estimate point, or we're paying for estimates?
This has all been free, we haven't paid anything, um.
Okay.
So the one thing that I was kind of thinking of, looking at the prices, um, to be honest, was possibly. Whichever firm the board thinks is the most qualified or likes the best to move forward with these studies, um, which would come in under budget of the grant. And give us, uh, like, the highest estimate was being hunted up two hundred something thousand, um.
Yeah.
And we can see what the issues are with the different hot holes or sinkholes around town, so they can bring their sonar truck out. And if there is an issue that needs to be fixed really quick, like, like a road about to collapse, then we can kind of use extra funding. For the year grant to fix that right away.
Um, can we do something about just getting a sonar truck out? Because, um, I know at the end of Rectory Lane and on the corner of. That street the roundhouse is on, uh, there's a sinkhole and it's a metal plate covering it.
Yeah, Elm Street.
Um, is that a sonar situation? Is that something we need to do around town?
Right, yeah, Mead and Hunt, in their proposal, they did propose bringing a a sonar ground penetrating radar truck through all the town streets. Um, now that the sinkhole you're talking about is at seven twenty-five at Elm Street, I think it's technically on state, but it would probably. It wouldn't be much for them to run that as well.
I didn't think about that, but yeah.
And we can send the report to the state, um, and let them know what's going on under there if it is bad.
Okay.
Um, but definitely.
That's been there for a year now, so.
Yeah.
Um, and, like, forgive me if I I missed this in listening to the conversations, but the thing. That, um, we need to do is if we don't spend some of this money by, I think it's. April, is that right, Kyle, that that we could lose the state funding? So that's part of, kind of hurry in selecting a. Um, the firm for, um, doing the engineering planning. Um, yeah. And we don't have to, we don't have to necessarily use the same firm to do the actual construction, but we don't want to lose the state funding. Um, by waiting either.
And then, to go back. Yeah, to go back to Commissioner's law, even if we select the engineering firm now, with the towns on the passes, they have hired a construction manager. To oversee the projects and work with the engineering firms and studies, and then the contractors and stuff as well. Um, so that could be.
Again, Kyle.
Uh, sure, so what we, the town's done in the past, Commissioner, um, I know you've talked about bringing on a specialist to kind of oversee everything possibly. Um, so that's something the town's done, um, in which we brought someone in to work with the engineering firm. And with the contractor who actually does the work and kind of oversees that whole project. So if we select the engineering firm now, we can always look later. A month or two down the road and get the, the, either a project manager and the contractor on board as well.
I agree with that.
Can, can light, shut your windows, a skunk just sprayed outside my window. Just letting you know. Uh, I just got a whiff of a skunk outside the window.
Oh, my gosh. I I agree with you, Kyle, that we should definitely, um, and Sarah, uh, move forward with the design plan and then, yes. Hire someone, because there's a, um, you know, there's a lot of fees that we don't think about that actually come to, come into play. When you have a big project like this, so someone managing the project would definitely make sure. That certain things are done before payments are made and stuff like that, so that'd be great. Uh, my part, my thought is, um, I'm definitely leaning towards Mead and Hunt, simply because I think that they have. Um, the equipment and they offered the time and, uh, services so far that we need. It seems like, you know, meeting with, uh, Kyle and Darnell. Doing the, doing the due diligence needed to make sure that, um, they've given us the best overview of what. We would need, and I'm, I'm really interested in that sonar truck, so I think, you know, the town is so old. Really don't know what's under these roads, and I.
That would be good denial.
Yeah, I think it's going to be very important for us, not to, just also, because no one else is offering that, and, um, we. Um, Commissioner Duckett, I don't think that you can say that no one else is offering that, I just think that, um. You know, people didn't, you know, we didn't, I guess, we didn't get enough bids, because, I mean, if you look at, you look.
Or it could be a gimmick.
Big price difference in what the, what the scope of work they were providing. They were giving you stuff too that you didn't even ask for, and some of that is just not, um. Not just because they want to help you, but they want to make money too. They looking at, they looking at it from a standpoint of this business, they want to make money too, so they're going to bring you. All the bells and whistles, so that's, that's something to look at. If you look at the scope of work that was provided, and you look at what they're offering, some of that stuff is, you know. They just went, you know, they they gave you a lot, a lot, a whole lot more than what you're asking for. And like I said, a lot of that is, is to make money, maybe not all of it is needed, and that's why it's important to have a construction manager. Yeah, I totally understand that part in scope of work, but the part that what I'm. Is that they did come in to do a overview and talk with actually Kyle and Darnell. To see what was needed and to ensure that they were able to provide the surface of the services. Of course, we can go and mark out all the fluff, but in terms of a sonar truck, I did not hear that any other, um, uh. Person or any other company offered that particular service. So I'm not saying that we can't go through it and and knock out any fluff, but in terms of what their thoughts were in Darnell. And he is, you know, managing and understanding what we need in terms of the roads around here, we as well. But hearing their feedback that they provided some good input is what I needed to hear, so if they're comfortable with. We know that there's always going to be some fluff in 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 these, uh, you know, uh. The fluff and the proposals, but we knocked that out.
Okay, um. Carl, maybe before the town meeting, when we vote, we can just have the information. About whether it's C, CBW, is that right? That they have, uh, sorry, CB three, um. If they have sonar truck capability. That way we know when we're making the vote, whether it's even possible for that firm to.
In other words, we're making the vote on the fact that they have the sonar capability? In other words.
Well, no, I mean, we'll all make the vote based on our assessments and conversations, but I think the, the kind of. This, the.
Everybody's not comparing, the contract is not balanced, it's not balanced, like. You're not comparing the same thing, like I said before, it's not the same thing, so you have a sonar truck and you're, and you didn't put that in your bid. So therefore, the, the contracts are not, and they're not saying, they're not the same type of contracts. Well, they're the same type of. For the same, they don't offer the same scope. So one offers the sonar, one doesn't. So you need something to be, you know, to compare.
More important than the other.
Right, so well.
What's more important than the other, I mean, really?
I think the question is, I think the sonar truck is important to our residents based on public comment, and. Um, our public works department based on the advice of the director of public works. And so I think the question becomes not necessarily, how much is the sonar truck for CB three? But do they, can they?
Can they provide it?
So if they can provide it, then that, uh, can make a slightly better decision when we vote on this. On February eighth.
Yep. How much? That's my question. I forgot.
So Kyle, I know we're going to drive them crazy by asking them lots of other questions, but if we can ask them that question tomorrow morning and get an answer back.
Absolutely, I'll shoot them an email tonight, or first thing tomorrow morning, and, uh. See if they can even offer that service, um, and just to build off of, uh, kind of what was discussed, I know for Mead and Hunt, um. When they met with, uh, Mr. Bond and myself, and we were talking what we needed, the reason I think the sonar truck got added was because we were talking about. Sinkholes and all these other issues that, um, um, that we were having, and their recommendation was, well, you probably should. Do a ground penetration radar of the roads, so you know what's there, so you don't have to dig it up. Um, so just a lot of their RFP could have been built off that, I'm sure there's some stuff that can get cut out, of course, like Commissioner Lot said. Um, but I think that's where some of, uh, at least Mead and Hunt's, the extra items came from, was that discussion with, uh, Mr. Bond and myself. But we can always take it back.
I just want to, I just want to find out how much it is to do sonar. Um, I just don't want it to be the commissioner's street and, you know, other streets are not affected. Could they are? There's a metal plate in front of the street with a roundhouse.
Sense, what you said made a lot of sense, um, um, as to why other things were added. Because it was word of mouth, they weren't, it wasn't actually in your RFP, so that makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Oh, no problem, yeah, I just want to clarify that, some, I'm, I'm sure some stuff can be cut back, um. But for, uh, Commissioner Hancher, I know the cost for the sonar truck, if I remember correctly, was about four thousand dollars for all the town streets. So they would run it all the town streets, um, they may not have it down the whole time, but they, they'd have it down most of the time, checking stuff out. Um, and hitting all the hotspots we'd want them to check out, so I think it was around.
Okay.
Four thousand dollars of the proposal is the, the ground penetrating radar truck.
Okay, that's cool, thank you. Thank you for telling me.
Yeah, I think that four thousand dollars is, it it would be well spent, and it's actually not just to, just on the school line street. But this also affects, you got to understand that this affects the houses that are.
Yeah.
One of these streets here, and the water damage that is being caused by the storm drain. Not being properly, uh, fixed, so it's not just for the school lane street, but it's for the, the.
We have several town roads that have sinkhole problems, so it wouldn't really just be an individual street. Um, and it's been concern, um, Commissioner Duckett can attest that we've been kind of talking about since. We came in here, this concern about sinkholes and safety and, you know, keeping everyone safe, so I think that. Um, it will help us make a better decision if we have that information. Um. Do we have any more kind of new discussion, comments amongst ourselves? Because I do want to give residents a chance to tell us what they think, so we can consider that when we go into vote.
Commissioner Hancher is good, thank you.
Okay, John, do residents have any comments they want to share with us for us to consider?
At this time, I do not see a hand raised.
All right, well, they'll have a chance again to comment on it on February eighth, so. Let's move on to the next item, which is Resolution twenty-two-two dash oh-five Town Meeting Regulation. Um, Kyle, can you give us an overview and then we'll discuss?
Absolutely, um, so as mentioned at the, uh, the previous work session, and this was, uh, introduced, even though it's a resolution. Um, the board chose to introduce it, treat it more as a, a, an ordinance in order for proper public comment. Um, for that, so pretty much it's, um, going back through a resolution that was passed a couple of years ago. Um, governing the rules and order of the meetings of the town of Upper Marlboro. So there are some updates made off the bat, we knew, uh, had to be changed due to like quorums, now that we're at five commissioners, um, what a quorum is. Um, and voting and whatnot, also adding some items in there about virtual and blended meetings, um, to clarify that. Because that was not initially in the first resolution, it's one of the things that came out of COVID. And then the other large item, um, that I want to highlight for the public is the swapping of the. Town meeting and the work session dates, so it would still be the second and fourth Tuesdays. However, the second Tuesday would become the work session, and the fourth Tuesday would become the town meeting. Um, this was made at the request of, uh, some staff members, so that when they're, they would have more time to do reports, like for instance, financial. Reports was difficult to get together, especially if the, uh, the town meeting felt closer toward the end of the month. Um, so if like the first, uh, day of the month was a Tuesday, they had exactly a week, or actually less than a week, they had a couple of days, because we published the packet. Um, on Thursday or Friday the week before, so they really only had two to three days, um. Whoop, sorry, yeah, or yeah, even sooner now. And then also it, uh, it also helped so that. When we divide things into months, um, you're looking at one item will come up at the beginning of the month. For discussion at the work session and then get passed at the town meeting. It's not kind of spread over. Um, a couple of months trying to keep track of stuff. So those were kind of the big things that came out of that. Um, the, that's resolution or the one that the trup placing was the only place that set that the town, uh. The dates of the town meeting, um, the charter, just as we have to meet at least once a month, which, which gets met. I think I covered all the big items. Obviously you can see the track changes in the, uh. In the packet. I'll pass it back over to the board for, for discussion.
Hey, comments in alphabetical order again?
No comment.
I actually had kind of a comment slash suggestion slash concern. So. The whole special meeting thing that came up today was like a really last minute thing on some very old business. And we've had a couple of these, like, oh, we need to make a quick decision on this. Um, but our procedures, you know, say we're only voting at regular town meetings. And I don't think it's good practice to make it a regular thing to vote at work sessions, but I think. If we put some guidelines in here, like. Say, if a item of old business. Comes forward with a time sent, with a time sensitive need to be voted on at a work session, then. Um, that items will, can be voted on at the work session as long as it is published. That that voting will happen twenty-four hours in advance and public comment is allowed on that item. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I'm the six forty-five, six thirty meetings, just to like. Get stuff done, it, when we could be doing them at the seven o'clock meeting feels. A little chaotic.
Can you reframe that question?
I agree. So you're saying basically that instead of having these quick impromptu meetings, we just do it at seven o'clock. Quickly and then we move forward into our regular scheduled town meeting, correct?
Or just even in the work session, as long as we're advertising, because basically the special. Meeting is just us advertising that we're going to vote and then allowing public comment on the item. So instead of having two meetings.
Right, that's what I said. We just started at seven. Yes, I agree with you.
But what about the issue we had today where we couldn't log in and?
We are going to resolve the webinar issues, I think.
I'm not to be a downer.
Tommy, you and I can log on early next, or in two weeks, so that we can work out any. Innocent care and get home and try to lock on.
Yeah, okay. So, um. Even what about text messages? That doesn't work?
Text messages for.
Decision making.
We have to make all decisions in a public forum. What our thought process is and how we're.
No, I understand, but I, I was thinking like, if it was. A text message that we could do it in a forum that it was available to other people. You know what I mean? Like we could, okay.
There's just rules for us. The rules come from. And we really, we really. Personally too, I want to make sure the public has ample opportunity to comment on things so we can consider their comments when we make our decisions. But yeah, we just have to.
And I'm respectful.
We have to follow.
Interesting idea.
Yeah, there's a lot of technology issues with the government, uh, type stuff.
We'll get it right.
So, um, that was my comment. So we'll let Tommy, if you have other comments on the town meeting regulations and then we'll move on to. Karen, did you have anything? Are you, I can't hear you.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, um, I would like to take public comment on this issue. We will. John, if you can manage the three minutes with the, uh, order of hand raising. And all that and listen to the public comment and consider it in. Decisions moving forward.
Anyone want to make comment? All right, we have no hands.
Mayor, quick question for, uh, your suggestion on in voting in work sessions. Could we also set a monetary value, um, if the board's approving funding for like? I would say definitely less than five thousand. It works anything over, but I'll, I just want to throw a monetary value.
Value on what?
That we can't vote on anything costly in a work session. I guess probably also, and you mentioned this when I first had this idea, we can't execute contracts.
Oh, of course not.
So maybe Kyle, you and Will can work out the details on that. And update it for. The February eighth meeting and then we'll all, you know, get to look at it starting next week and can provide comments.
Yeah, well, I'll do a breakout memo separate from the resolution. And, uh, I'll ask John to, we'll, I'll work with John as well on this and, and make a separate slide. Cause it'll probably be the last change prior to the vote. So just to. Make sure everyone's aware of voting during work sessions and the limitations that the. Uh, cause right now there's technically is no real limitations on voting in work session. So this would definitely. Say when you have to call a special town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I think we want to be transparent, but we also want to be able to work efficiently.
Of course.
Here for a second while I get my agenda back up. All right, so we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Oh, yeah, no, we already did that. Okay, sorry. Which is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh six red light locations. And I don't know if Kyle or Chief is going to present this.
Um, I can cover real quick and pass it over to Chief, but pretty much, uh. This is a resolution to allow the town to place red light cameras at the intersection of two oh two and seven twenty-five and seven twenty-five at three oh one. And it does have a stipulation there that it will not take effect until those areas are actually within town limits. Um, so we're not kind of putting the cart before the horse. Um, so even though it, it, it's getting past February eighth and annexation just come into place till February eleventh. This does not go into effect until after the annexation is, is legal. So I just wanted to highlight that. Did I miss anything, Chief?
Nope, everything sounds good.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any comments in alphabetical order? I don't have any comments.
No comment.
No comment.
All right, um, let's see if there's any public comments.
Hello, Ms. Williams from Marlboro Town. Um, I definitely support, uh, the red light, uh, camera.
Thank you. Anything else, John?
Thank you.
I do not have anyone else's hand raised.
All right, let's move on to FY twenty twenty-three budget planning calendar, item number six.
I can start and I'll, I'll pass it over to Mr. Morgan. Um, but pretty much every year, um, well, actually, starting last year, we started these budget calendars in which we held, uh. Extra work sessions and kind of looked at the, at the next couple of months, we have a, a timeline that the budget, the annual budget has to be passed. So instead of waiting till the end of the year and trying to figure out all these dates, um, we actually started it kind of early in January. So we could start pre-planning for the next couple of months. Um, pretty much the budget is, is a huge document of the town. So we want to do it right. And allow for proper, uh, resident input and feedback and also, um, just getting everything from like presentations of the different. Uh, department heads on their departments and now also committees. Um, we did reach out to the committees asking for budgets so we can make educated. A bunch of planning decisions based off their needs. Um, so you can see here, we kind of set the, um, the pace based off existing meetings, work sessions and town meetings. There were some special, uh, budget work session items in here. Um, and this is based off last year's calendar, just updated dates. Um, the blanks are potential extra budget work sessions. I think last year we did them during the day, or I can't remember if we did them in the evening or not. Um, so that's something for the board to decide. You only need three to have a work session or if. Uh, only two commissioners or something want to get together, but still have it in a public forum. Um, for discussion stuff, that's open as well because we have, um, well, we'll have five commissioners. So all depends how the board wants to move forward and see that. Um, but pretty much the budget has to be voted on, um, in a special town meeting. On June seventh, because we swapped the meeting dates. So by the end of June, we would not have the twenty days limit. So that's something I wanted to highlight. Here five months out, um, so we would have to call a special town meeting to pass the budget. On the seventh, so.
I have a question. Does, can someone in my household run for commissioner?
I think so. I don't think there's anything against. People living in house, being elected officials.
I'm just worried about quorum and, you know, just. I figured I would ask. My partner actually asked me tonight and I figure it, I would ask you. In a public forum. If anyone has done rejection, tell me.
Okay, let's, um. Yeah, because we want to get through the business, uh, but maybe we can come back. So last year, I think the meetings were at eleven o'clock. In the afternoon, the extra budget work sessions. What I think we should do is try to find a time slash day that works best for all the commissioners. But basically have it set up so that if. Only two commissioners can be there, we can still hold the session, record it and publish it for. The public to understand the process, because it would basically be the same as an education session. For commissioners, um, and I should have let Janice go first. I'm sorry, Janice, Commissioner Duckett.
No, can you repeat that, Sarah? I'm sorry, there was just a little bit of the delay there.
I was thinking that we should try to find a time for those extra budget sessions that works best for all four of us. But, uh, that we should make sure they're set so that if a last minute, you know, there's. Forum, the meeting still happens so that the, and it's just recorded because it's basically information, providing information. So then we would be able, other commissioners could review it if they weren't there and the public can still have access to information.
Yes, absolutely. That works. I mean, we don't want to delay it, certainly.
Shoot, maybe other comments and then we can work out the timing of it via email, Kyle, because that's an administrative function.
Yeah, we can do that and just announce at the, at the next, uh, public session what the timeline is.
Does anyone have any comments about this?
Not at this time.
Okay, um. John, does, does the public have any comments about this?
We hands raised as of right now.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to the next item on the agenda. And I'm having trouble going between my two pages. Uh, thank you. Which is the town's vaccine policy and response directive. So Kyle, if you can.
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, so before, um, the board, you see the COVID nineteen response policy directive. So this policy was initiated, um, under Mayor Kenoyer at the beginning of the pandemic. Um, so it outlined the basic guidelines of how the town was going to respond to the pandemic. What safety precautions we were putting in place, such as the temperature screenings and whatnot. As well as stuff like if you do test positive for COVID, you have automatically, um, X amount of extra sick days. Um, that are not come from your, your sick leave bank or from the federal government. That was just something the town was taking on to make sure. You, people were not coming into work sick and didn't have enough sick days and possibly infecting people. This was a stay home. And, uh, stay all right and use these sick days. Um, so we are updating them now with some testing guidelines. So it's, it's technically in place now as a directive. Um, but the, the mayor's just looking for board approval to sup, um, to solidify it moving forward. Um, so pretty much it goes over like when an employee tests, what happens if they test positive? How are we taking to the PCR test versus the, the, uh, the rapid tests and whatnot? And then went to quarantine, um. So that's pretty much the directive. I don't know if you want to handle this two different document, Mayor, for comment and whatnot. That's in the vaccine policy or.
I mean, I think we decided to tackle them together because they tie so much into each other. And Commissioner Duckett, I know had questions and comments, so.
And then the, the back, the vaccine policy, we removed those items that were discussed.
Okay, yeah, I'm not seeing it in front of me.
Um, so we can just talk about the draft.
Maybe. Yeah, the, I think Janice, the items that you have brought up at the last meeting as concerning were removed.
Can you repeat that? Can you say that again? Yes, they were. Right, they were. I'm good with the communication. I have no questions on it. And, um, thank you for making those, um, reviewing that and making those adjustments.
Commissioners, Hancha and Lot, questions, comments?
No, not at this time.
I'm sorry, no question. Thank you.
John, are there any, uh, public comments?
Do not see a hand raised at this time.
All right, then we will move on to the next item. Which is concerning the mowing brush agreement with Providence St. John Baptist Church. That is actually for the community garden. So I will give Kyle. The floor, but then I may have stuff to add because I've been involved with this.
Yeah, um, absolutely. So, um, pretty much as everyone's aware, we have community garden partnered with Providence St. John Baptist Church. They've technically been outside of the town limits. Um, so it's kind of been. On a handshake agreement, which we obviously don't want to continue. Um, but pretty much, uh, the town and, and the church and the green team went under into a partnership agreement. Um, which just outlined that basically that the church is. What the town will assist in maintaining with this community garden. Um, we're obviously not going to maintain all the church grounds. But just do some basic items like, um, cutting back brush or items directly related to the. Um, community garden and then possibly putting it under like the town's, town's insurance. um, community garden and then possibly putting it under like the town's, town's insurance just for the community garden and just for events of the community garden. Um, and then uh, just also an agreement that probably says that the church just can't take a bulldozer to the community garden. Um, just some safeguards and on, in place for both sides, both parties. Um, so that everyone's comfortable with that, that staying there, um, that asset staying there. Um, and I'll pass back over to the mayor because I think she's been in some more communications with the church itself about it.
Yeah, so um, we've been back and forth talking and basically, um, you know, the garden is in a cleared area, um, but there is brush encroaching around it. Um, and Director Bond has reviewed the site. Actually, we happened to be over there at the same time today looking at the site. And um, he's advising, and I can give you the floor to Darnell if you, when I'm done talking, that he could mow the area around the fencing for the garden to keep the weeds from coming in and encroaching in the garden. Um, he can also kind of mow down areas where we're going to expand the garden before we expand them. Uh, and that he may be able to do some brush removal, but that other brush removal will have expenses and will need a mechanism to figure out how those expenses are funded um, and how that moves forward. So that would be need to happen in the agreement. So I believe we're going to get it drafted up and over to the attorney to review this week, then off to the church so that we're looking at a draft document for um, the February town meeting rather than the March town meeting, as the memo says. And that is because, you know, um, there's some ground bees in there. And while Darnell, I'm sure believes in the pollination aspects of bees. Him and his crew do not like having firsthand interactions with them when they're removing brush. Um, so if, if we're able to get this agreement executed in February, that would be safest for Darnell and his crew. Darnell, did you have anything to add?
Um, I just wanted to add that uh, in doing this, entering this agreement, there will be very limited uh, resources that will actually uh, involve, you know, the town's uh, public works as far as the um, little maintenance that is being asked of us at this time. Um, just in case any residents were sort of concerned about that, but other than that, you hit everything right on hit.
So other commissioners, do you have questions, comments, concerns? Jen, we'll start with you.
No questions there. No questions, thank you.
All right, then we'll move forward with this. Oh, wait, hold on. Is there any public comment, John?
Nobody with a hand raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the financial policies. And so we'll turn it over to Will.
I am here. Well, so we've been talking, speaking about the uh, financial policies uh, for a few meetings now. I think the last two meetings we may have had this on here. Um, with the uh, town uh, financial control or internal control policies is pretty much our uh, guidance on how we should receive payments and distribute uh, any type of checks and payments as well. So within this policy is speak, it'll speak about payroll, how payroll needs to be administered and uh, who also needs to uh, see the payroll being completed in it, in the reports. Uh, it'll speak about the treasury, treasury reports, reconciliation, uh, cash payments, uh, check payments, uh, sorry, cash payments, check payments and or credit card payments. Uh, how they uh, need to be uh, taken in by the town of Upper Marlboro um, as well and in, in any other documentation that we need to take in, such as a confidential information for uh, someone's uh, personal records and such as their credit card uh, numbers and things such as that nature. So um, this is something that uh, we wanted to make sure that we updated. I do believe that there will be a future updates uh, in particular uh, to the sections that uh, restricts, uh, gives some type of restriction on the department heads. Or the threshold, sorry, threshold such as how much they can spend, uh, whether it's using a credit card and or uh, for any types of purchases that might need to be bid out and or receive quotes for. So I know there, there may be some additional conversations in a uh, near uh, meetings to discuss that. Um, but this again is something that uh, we wanted to make sure we have on the books. Uh, so it provides a, a, a true guidance of how we need to uh, construct a town when it comes to uh, the, the revenues that we have coming in and or the expenses that we uh, have going up. Uh, we did provide this, as you might see, a lot of red. Uh, so we did provide this to the uh, to the town attorney, who of course did his thorough review of it. Um, so he marked it up quite a bit. A lot of um, a lot of, you know, cosmetic things, just making sure that the wording were right in certain areas uh, that was completed by him. So uh, that was passed off to the town attorney, um, myself, Kyle, and the commissioners, I believe, have also been able to review this as well.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, let's just see if commissioners have any comment alphabetical order.
Oh, no, um, thank you. Uh, thank you, Will. We have talked about this quite a bit, but this sounds like a little bit, um, some grammatical changes and updates, but outside of that, I don't have any about this.
I.
Thank you, Will. No questions at this time.
I just have one comment, um, Will, under the credit card, um, since page thirteen procedures, the card whole agreement says that, like, basically that it'll say that they have to sign saying if they spend money for personal charges, they'll reimburse the town. Also say that um, they'll reimburse the town and will be subject to disciplinary consequences since they're not supposed to do that in the first place. Higher up.
Yes, we definitely can say that. Um, I would hope that if anybody's trying to make, well, obviously we wouldn't, we wouldn't want that to happen. I should leave that alone. We wouldn't want that to happen. So yes, we can add that language in there.
Commissioner Lot, did you have anything? Karen, sorry.
No problem. No, not at this time.
Okay. Um, I believe we're at the end of the agenda, though there is also a structure of government outline in the packet for y'all. Um, and.
Hit us.
Um, so the that Kyle is creating, as you know, a portal for us, um, as well as a web portal for residents. Because now with five commissioners, we need to look at structure of government and there have been concerns in the past over um, the form of government that allows so much power to the office of the mayor and wanting to have a more democratic system. So that's going to be a discussion we're going to have over the next couple of months and we really want the public to be involved in that. So just everyone knows that's there, commissioners and residents, questions, more information, concerns, email that info box or commissioners contact Kyle or I, and we will, you know, research information and get that out there. We'll collate public comment so that we can really do this properly. Um.
Mayor Sarah, you're a rock star.
Thank you. Um, I do have one other thing. And that is that um, I have been asked by the Director of Public Works for us to consider a personnel matter, which we'll need to do in a closed session. Um, he's agreed to provide us a written summary. Um, and it's, it's not a concern or anything. Uh, it's just a simple kind of question. And so I think we can have a, have a meeting um, in twenty to thirty minutes to discuss it once we have the written summary um, from Director Bond. So I just wanted you guys to know about that ahead of time and be able to um, think about when you might have availability for it.
Mayor Sarah, um, I told you my availability and you know it. Just talk to me and I'll give you my availability.
Okay. Um, Kyle, do you have anything else for us before we adjourn?
Um, no, nothing, uh, nothing pressing. I can't wait till it's done.
Okay. I'm going to suggest we adjourn.
My second.
Thank you. All right. So we will adjourn this meeting and um, we'll see everyone again on February eighth. You.